Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. Mrs. Jazinski, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Grippo?
Here.
Mr. Gusselberg?
Here.
Ms. Hallen?
Here.
Ms. Harrigan?
Here.
Mr. Perigini?
Here.
Ms. Sobel?
Here.
Ms. Vatti?
Here.
Thank you so much. Would you all please rise and for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you so much. Welcome. I did not have a chance to meet our two new student representatives, so hello, Isabel and RJ. Do you have a report for us tonight?
We do. I think this is on.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, perfect. So, I'm Isabel and then...
I'm RJ.
First off, I just wanted to start off and say that it is such an honor to be here. It's really wonderful that we're able to be here and work with you guys and also we are really excited to learn more about the Board of Ed and how the system works and we are really excited to make some changes as well and collaborate. So, it's actually very timely that we're here right now because there's actually been some student concerns about student representation in the Board of Education. There was recently a Twitter account created by a student who was concerned about issues relating to student drug use and how the administration handles that, also how there's like a very stressful environment of the high school in terms of like academics and the rigor. There's also a big concern in terms of the health and wellness curriculums in the Cheshire Public Schools systems and also just in general, student involvement in the Board of Education. So, I personally spoke to this student and suggested that they could come to the open forums that we hold occasionally and we also mentioned that maybe it would be a wonderful idea to create like open forums at the high school for students to attend so that it's more easily accessible and I'd love to hear your input on that as well. Vaping has always been a pretty big problem for the high school and the middle school and even some elementary schools as well, but there notably have been less people vaping out in the open at our high schools, especially with the implementation of stricter vaping restrictions. We actually recently had a student vaping forum at our school, at the high school, and it was also student-led and student-organized, so it was great to kind of have a student's perspective on that issue. There's also been a great increase in school support resources, there's also been the creation of an anonymous support group, and there's also been the installation of vape detectors. We currently are hosting French and German exchange students at the high school, which is really exciting. It's very culturally enriching and exciting to have them here. I know that the French students leave this coming Tuesday and they've been here for 12 days, so that's been a lot of fun and it's been a pretty influential part of like the past couple of weeks, so.
So, the school's excited for our next home football game tomorrow and we have T-shirts that will benefit for breast cancer research up at Hartford Healthcare Center, so students have been selling the T-shirts at lunch and it's a really great benefit. We are going to have our Alumni College Fair on November 27, 2019, and CHS alumni are going to represent their colleges. It's just a good way for connections between current students at CHS and alumni. And Cheshire Lights of Hope is having Light the Night student organized and led and the school chapter will help out as well. And the Best Buddies Friendship Walk is also next weekend and there's going to be a lot of food at Quinnipiac University and it's a great cause as well. And the Cheshire High School Marching Band, Music in Motion, was held October 5th, it was a Saturday, and we've just been prepping, I'm in the marching band, we've just been prepping and working hard. Our whole show is out on the field now. We're playing Thriller, Moonlight Sonata, and Music Casombe. That's pretty cool. I don't know how to pronounce it, it's Italian. And the Yellow House is also holding a Youth Focus, and that's a Youth Focus group and that's facilitating between the grade seven, uh, grade seven and 12th, and it's just a good group, it's basically like the vaping forum, so it's a group talk. That's it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's great to have you two here. You are welcome to stay for as long as you'd like at the meeting. I think we, you know, you make a really good point about trying to get more student input to the board and so I think that's something that we should, you know, try to arrange, like a forum at the school. I'm not sure, you know, how we will pull it off to do it during the day, but I think it would be great to be able to sit down and really have sort of a open dialogue, so I really appreciate you bringing that to, um, to us this evening. Anyone else have any questions? Mr. Perigini?
This here is the vaping forum, that's internal to Cheshire High School, correct? With the students?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The vaping forum is pretty much internal to Cheshire High School, right?
Yes. It was exclusive to Cheshire High School.
Uh, I'll tell you, I've heard, I've been hearing from some students for a while on the vaping concerns at the high school. Yeah, I wish as a way we could be a part of that forum or, and if we can't be there, I certainly encourage those students to come here at a meeting or even a subcommittee meeting. I know they don't want to be here at 7:00, 8:00 o'clock at night during school week, but I just feel like we're missing out on some positive, some feedback that we could use to help that situation be better, but let's actually stay close to that if we can somehow. Thank you.
Just to clarify, that vaping forum already took place, the, one of the, but certainly, you know, connecting with our kids is definitely something that we can do.
Yep.
So, I think that's a great idea too, to have student involvement and feedback, but I also wonder whether we can do something with Dr. Gad where it's through the high school first and foremost so the administration can hear about all the concerns. I mean, obviously, we want to hear them too, but perhaps to do it maybe set up through the high school and then invite the board members to actually attend so we can listen in and then maybe go that way.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I agree. I think that communication would be very beneficial for this in terms of like the Board of Education and also vaping, and I think that it would be, it's really important for there to be communication and that, that connection. So, I was thinking a good idea, it definitely, students are less likely to come to meetings that are at like 7:00 PM, so it would be, I think it would be a good idea to maybe organize something after school so that it doesn't interfere with classes and this could be like premeditated and it could be preorganized, so we could plan it in advance and then advertise it well and make sure that students know about it. And we, I will also make sure to communicate that with you in terms of dates and times if we can organize that. That would be wonderful.
Thank you very much, Isabel and RJ. Yes? Oh, I'm sorry, Adam, go ahead.
Sorry, I just had a quick question. Did you mention something about some grassroots Twitter accounts at the beginning or is that just something proposed?
There was a Twitter account that appeared. A student appeared to want to actually run for the Board of Education for a position, so they were very outspoken in what they thought needed to be discussed a little bit more, so.
Oh, okay. So, it wasn't something that was supposed to be encouraging discussion, it was more of a, because I was just like, oh, I'll follow along and see what's going on, but that's completely, this is something else then. I was just misunderstanding.
Yeah, they, they talked a bit about the concerns that they had in the community, like formally and seriously, they, they had some concerns that they wanted to address, so I think we should definitely communicate more with them.
All right, thank you.
Again, you are welcome to stay and thanks so much for your report, but you're also welcome, you can leave if you have to get home and...
Ms. Hallen?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to mention that RJ and Isabel stayed the entire meeting last week.
Thank you. Okay. See, I didn't know that, so, fine. Perfect.
They might very well do that again.
Okay.
You, I think, were the first ones in, at least my eight years, who stayed for the entire meeting, so thank you. And I just want to throw out there for the, for the student who was interested in running for the Board of Ed, I know there are age restrictions in the charter, but tell him that he can email any one of us and he's more than welcome to come to a Board of Education meeting and, and share his concerns with us. He doesn't have to make an appointment and he doesn't have to, you know, it doesn't have to be anything stealth, we're more than happy to hear from him because I'm incredibly intrigued by him right now. So, thank you.
Ms. Sobel, did you have something you wanted to share with us at this moment?
I was, I was going to wait until more organic moment, but it's now. I just wanted to thank the school district in general and Superintendent Solan. I helped run the Cheshire Food Drive, which is coming up on November 2nd and 3rd, and once again, we are trying to involve the entire school district in this, so all of the elementary schools, the junior high, the middle school and the high school, Darcy, will be running in-house food drives at each building. So, I just wanted to thank Superintendent Solan for that and thank all of the, the building principals for allowing it and we really appreciate it. And also to remind people about the food voucher program. We also raise money and the town has a food voucher program where if you or you, if you as a resident or someone that you know is in need, they should go to Human Services and just say they're a Cheshire resident and they're having a tough month and they will get a $40 voucher that they can use for food items of their choice at Stop &amp; Chop or Big Y. The bill for that then comes to Cheshire Food Drive, Inc. So, if anybody is wondering what we collect money for, we, we collect money to fully fund this food voucher program that can be used on an emergency basis with no paperwork involved, and if people need it on a more continuing basis, then there's certain economic criteria that have to be met, but we're really trying to spread the word about it. So, for more information about whether it's a food drive on the green, November 2nd and 3rd, in the schools starting on Monday for the next two weeks, or the food voucher program in general, please go to cheshirefooddrive.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sobel. I think we have some fun presentations this evening. Mr. Gusselberg?
Thank you. I have the privilege this evening to introduce Carrie Bannick. Carrie is a parent of three, and those three are right over there, cute, cute little guys, and a dedicated volunteer at Highland School. She's an active member of the Highland PTO, serving as the Cultural Arts Coordinator. As the Cultural Arts Coordinator, Carrie seeks out talented performers, provide the students of Highland with exposure to the arts and cultures from around the world. Over the past three years, these performers have provided our students with exposure to art, storytelling, music, and other amazing performances. Carrie is also responsible for facilitating the Visiting Author Program. Last year, our students were treated to an amazing presentation from Norman Korman. This year, we're excited to bring author Jerry Pallata to Highland School, and I've seen Jerry, does a great job. In addition to Carrie's dedication to the Cultural Arts and Visiting Authors Program, Carrie is a literacy volunteer working with students in our primary grades, helping them to become stronger readers. Carrie is a former public school elementary teacher, sounds like you're working full-time right now, who generously offers her skills to our Highland students. Carrie continues to reach out by taking on leadership roles on various committees. Carrie will be leading the Veterans Day Honor Walk and Breakfast in November. Highland School is so grateful for Carrie's dedication to their school and I am grateful that I got a chance to introduce her to you this evening. Thank you very much, Carrie.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Scott, come on up and Carrie, we have a certificate for you and a little token. If you want to come on.
Picture time. Picture time. There you go.
Thank you.
Sure. It's my honor to welcome up to the podium Ms. Marie Broadway, who will have her own distinct honor to introduce someone else.
Good evening. The Anne Marie Murphy Para-educator of the Year Award has been established by the Connecticut State Department of Education and the School Para-Professional Advisory Council to recognize the important role of the para-educator in supporting student achievement. Anne Marie Murphy was a para-educator who lost her life at Sandy Hook and this award is named in her honor. This award honors a para-educator who demonstrates exceptional skill and dedication in the performance of his job. I am humbled to be able to honor Cheshire's first Instructional Assistant of the Year here tonight. Not only did this instructional assistant meet, meet the six primary areas of responsibilities, quotes from the letters of recommendation needed for the application process included, "This IA seamlessly incorporates support to the entire school population. This IA helps students of all needs. Having this IA in my classroom is like having another teacher. I rely heavily on the insights and skills of our instructional assistants and I am constantly learning and growing from my collaboration with them. Where this IA is concerned, this is especially the case." This IA wrote that helping every student in the classroom creates a safe space for the special education students. Students describe this IA as the teacher who walks around and helps kids, not helps special education kids, but just helps kids. One message that this IA has is that children need supportive adults. Love them, but teach them boundaries. Educate them, but only with reasonable expectations. Look for the good and praise them as much as possible. Nothing will ever be perfect, but this IA knows that he can always work to be better at helping. In fact, when this IA does that, the children get better. I am pleased to present to you an instructional assistant at Dad Middle School, Cheshire's Instructional Assistant of the Year, Andy Barris.
Thank you. Something a little bit more formal for you. This is, uh, nice.
Thank you.
Sure.
It is my pleasure to honor Kathy Hellreisch for her many years of service on the Board of Education. Kathy was a member of the Board from December 2005 through November 2009, during which time she held the Office of Secretary. She served again from December 2011 through July of this year and held the position of Chairperson from December 2015 to December 2018. Her tenure on the Board unfortunately came to a premature end when her house sold way too quickly, which was good for us, good for her, but bad for us, and she moved out of town. During Kathy's time on the Board, she worked tirelessly for the students of Cheshire. She was a strong proponent of full-day kindergarten and a driving force behind the introduction of World Language Study in the sixth grade. If she had her way, we would have implemented World Language Instruction in all elementary grades, but unfortunately, budget restraints got in the way. In addition to all of that, Kathy has for many years been a consistent and vocal advocate of modernizing our school facilities, devoting countless hours to the development of the Board's Facilities Master Plan, as well as our efforts to find a way to build a new six through eight middle school. Kathy's years of experience, her knowledge of the district, and her common professional demeanor have been and will continue to be missed, especially by me. Kathy, on behalf of the entire Board, I am happy to present you with this gorgeous personalized gift as well as your plaques, which I know will find a prominent and permanent place in your home. Thank you for all that you have done for Cheshire Public Schools. Thank you. Have a picture. Yeah, picture. And then, do you want to say something? Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Hallen, and you'll always be Ms. Fabiani to me. I just wanted to take a minute to thank the citizens of Cheshire for allowing me the opportunity to serve on the Board of Education. Anyone who knows me knows that education is something that I strongly believe in and I had a great time doing it. I'd also like to thank all the members that are sitting on the Board and previous members that I served with, but Ms. Sobel, Ms. Vatti, Ms. Harrigan, I know, well, Ms. Sobel and Ms. Vatti, I know you're leaving the Board at the end of this year and I just want to thank you for the time that you took to serve on the Board and for working with you. Ms. Harrigan, I wish you lots of good luck in the election and it was wonderful serving with you. And Mr. Perigini and Mr. Grippo, we had, we had fun. We had our differences, as many of us did, but, but we all worked for the same thing and we had fun. Mr. Gusselberg, thank you for taking over for me to, to finish my term. I never got the chance to work with you, but the few meetings that I've been at, I really wish I had. I think you'd have made a phenomenal Board Member and I'm sure you'll do well wherever you end up after this. Mr. Solan, Ms. Solano, Mr. Maciana, Mrs. Jazinski. Mrs. Jazinski is the brains behind the whole, the whole kit and caboodle. She keeps everybody working, she keeps everybody, and I thank you, especially as my time of chair, she was, she was always right there with everything I needed and lots of encouragement and suggestions. Mr. Solan, Mr. Maciana, and Ms. Solano, our school system is in great hands. You, you people do a lot of work and I hope that the town understands exactly what you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last year, many of you were able to attend the kickoff for our NIASC accreditation process. That was your kickoff. The high school had actually initiated the whole process many months before. The accreditation review process is, is pretty arduous and it requires a lot of preparation and planning, and so after many, many, many months, the NIASC visiting team arrived last March at, at Cheshire High School and it, you know, they spent several days reviewing the school and have spent the months since writing a report to determine the accreditation for Cheshire High School. So, I don't want to steal all Dr. Gad's thunder as she's going to present to us, so at this point, I invite all of our members of the Board to sit down front for a presentation from Dr. Gad.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share a little bit about our accreditation experience and to summarize the report. It was a rather exhaustive report, about 140 pages of information. So, every 10 years, this is why it's the Decennial Review, every 10 years, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges evaluates member schools for accreditation and our faculty completed an exhaustive self-study, which was about 170 pages long, covering every aspect of what we do at the high school. And what I'm going to go over tonight is just a brief summary. The, the full report itself is available on our website following tonight's presentation. It will also be available in hard copy at the Board of Ed and we'll be sending out a press release about that tomorrow, but we wanted to first share it with all of you before we did that. I'm just going to talk a little bit about the key recommendations and commendations from the committee and then our ongoing improvement plan based on that information. So, we received 38 commendations and 32 recommendations across the seven standards. So, here are the seven standards on which we are evaluated. Core values, beliefs, and learning expectations, and you'll also hear that in, in the parlance referred to as 21st century learning expectations. What does that mean in Cheshire? Performance standards. That's what that means. Our curriculum, instruction, assessment of and for student learning, which is key verbiage, not just of their learning, but so that it can inform how we want to ensure they're learning what they need to learn and of, working through any areas of misunderstanding. School culture and leadership, school resources for learning, and community resources for learning. So, in summary, we had some notable areas of commendation. Our development of our core values, so our performance standards, and our school culture and leadership, and school community resources for learning were areas where we had some strong commendations. Areas of recommendation featured mostly in our instructional core, curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And the, the report is designed, really, the, the point of all of it is to, to develop a roadmap really for continuous improvement. So, here are some of the key findings from the committee. So, commendations, they found, and, and this was reflected back to us throughout their visit and especially at the closing meeting, that our, our core values, our school culture, and the supportive community just read. They, they felt it, they saw it. Every student that they spoke to, they, they really felt that the strong community that we have, and I think you see that in our two Board Representatives. Our students share their thoughts. We, we want to know where they are because it's their school. We also recommended for our teacher, student, and community involvement in the, in the development of our core values. That wasn't just something that we threw together, that was something that we've developed with, a number of committees worked together involving parents and students, and we continued that, that revision through the Personalized Learning Task Force when we revised our, our performance standards. The commitment and involvement of teachers in curriculum development, and also the commitment to continue that revision process. It's a living thing. Curriculum evolves. The use of the Google platform and Chromebooks for all was another area that they found really positive for us. The commitment of the Board of Education in maintaining and making it really clear that they feel deeply about maintaining class sizes at about, the overall average, about 20 students per class, and also the productive parent, community, and higher education partnerships that... that support student learning. Just, you know, when you think about what's going to be coming up in November when we have our sophomore career day, any number of ways that our students are engaged with our larger community. It continues also our safe, positive, and respectful culture that fosters student responsibility for their own learning, and also a shared ownership and pride, and high expectations for all. Collaborative leadership rooted in our core values. Collaborative and constructive relationship between and among the school board, superintendent and principal. And I think it's that consistent connection that helps us to grow and to be successful. Another area was the large number of emotional academic intervention supports that we have for our students to ensure that they can be successful, and our collaborative partnership with Cheshire Youth and Social Services, and the support for the school expressed by parents and students. And then some areas that they recommend, that there is a lack of time for teachers to collaborate during the school day and year, and the recommendation is develop that. Make sure that our instructional improvement is based on formative assessment data and also increased teacher use of standardized assessment data. So in other words, taking a look at what we have and ensuring that we are collecting it, disaggregating it, and analyzing it. Revise the curriculum with an emphasis on complex thinking, obviously one of our two central focuses, and continue the transfer of our curriculum to the Google template. We began the process a couple of years ago. We developed a form moving all of our curricula into a Google template and into a Google form that's much more easily accessible by teachers. And so that's just a long and exhaustive process, and it continues. Time for teachers across grade levels to talk about our curricular progression, meaning how are we talking to elementary, middle, so that we really are seeing sort of this, what we call a vertical alignment. Ensure all teachers are differentiating and personalizing instruction, and ensuring consistent implementation of best practices, and ensure we're providing students with measurable criteria for success with very clear and targeted levels for achievement. To ensure we're integrating technology into lessons, and also tying that to grading practices and making sure that those are aligned with our core values, in other words, our performance standards, to improve that. Resolve heating and cooling issues throughout the building. It was one of their points that they said, you know, you can walk through the building and in one room, you're dying. It's a sauna, and then in another, you need, you know, a couple of layers. Develop and implement a capital improvement plan to manage the funding of improvements to the aging structure and systems of the building, and also ensure that all faculty fully understand the budget and how it's developed and why certain things happen the way they happen. I thought that was pretty insightful. So my role was to sit down with the chair of the committee, who was Dr. Linda Van Wagenen, who was a former assistant superintendent and director of curriculum in Plainville. And we talked through the report, and then I talked with the leadership team at the high school. I sat down with Jeff, and we really talked through ways to think through these recommendations that clearly you can't do in one year, wouldn't make any sense. So we put together a five-year plan. So for this year, we are focusing on the instructional core, focusing on how we run PLC meetings, so professional learning community meetings, and asking teachers to focus deeply on the development of common formative assessments and collecting and utilizing those data in their instructional decisions. We're also looking at sharing instructional practices, and I'll talk about that in a second, and also continuing with learning walks with an eye on complex thinking, because that was something also that was a piece of the recommendation. Ensure we are being really more explicit about the things that we do. A lot is being done, but their main thrust of the recommendations were make it explicit. So in sharing instructional practices, I'll get to that when I show you our professional development for this school year. For next year, we're looking to turn our focus, continue what we did for the instructional core, but really focus on twenty-first century skills, assessment, and alignment with performance standards. So fully finalizing our rubrics and curriculum alignment. A lot of that will be happening over the summer, going into the next school year, and then complete the transfer of our curricula into a Google format.
Can you elaborate on that point? Like, what does that mean for people that may not know?
The curriculum piece?
Yep.
So we had a database that housed our curriculum. And so anytime you transfer curriculum to another format, you're looking at articulating very clearly what the goals are for the course overall, what the performance standards are. Okay. The performance standards are that it's linked to what the core learning is, and so you evolve. Every time you work with curriculum, you evolve and you make it clearer and more understandable. And our goal especially has been to make it very clear for kids. So going from one format to another requires a lot of rewriting and reformulating and rethinking, so that the length of time it takes is that time to, while you're doing it, not just to pro forma, cut and paste, but to really make sure that what you're moving forward with meets these twenty-first century learning standards and is aligned with common core state standards and GSS.
Well, just, you know, to build on that, it was housed in a program that we paid for.
True.
And we shifted it into Google Docs. It enhanced teacher accessibility and was significantly cheaper. We can spend money on other things that are important for students.
And it made sense to us, since we're a Google school. And then for twenty-one to twenty-four, finalizing rubrics, really increasing and focusing on how we're communicating with our stakeholders, and how are we getting feedback from our stakeholders and incorporating that, so getting to the next level of development processes. We're looking at a schedule adjustment. How can we make our time more useful? Whether that stays in that chunk of time, whether it's going to be twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four, or if we could move something sooner, I don't know. We know that we've had some discussion about later start times. You probably heard on the news that California just went to that. So we're looking at that discussion twenty-one to twenty-four, and then cross-disciplinary opportunities, increasing those connections between courses. And this year, just to give you some more granular level, what we're doing with our professional development, our professional learning communities meet, they always have met monthly every third Tuesday, but we've increased a couple of months. We have two in October and three in March, so we wanted to have some court, some key times when we could give teachers a little bit more time. We're collecting and analyzing data, including PSAT and SAT, and also supporting the implementation of instructional strategies. What we're doing is asking teachers to share those practices through faculty meetings, so using that time really as a deeper professional development time, and utilizing our early release days to support more curriculum and vertical alignment work and instructional practices work. Any questions?
Just talk about the presentation?
Yes, I will.
Yeah, what was your, was there an aha or some recommendation that came about that? Was it even profound to you? It was, anyway, what I'm saying is, it doesn't seem like me. Again, I'm not in the trenches like you are.
Yeah.
But a lot of the recommendations are being covered in some way, shape, or form.
Mm-hmm.
Or right, or was there something that stood out that maybe we didn't know about?
There were no surprises. And I think that's due in large part to the really careful analysis that our staff did when they completed the self-study. We also took all of the survey data from our staff, from the community, from students, and we really, part of this is taking a very clear look at where you are. So we had worked through a lot of these points, and they really weren't surprises.
So was there a great design?
So we find out about accreditation. So what happens is, after this very long and exhaustive process, we go through this step, and they, being NIASC, holds an accreditation decision meeting, and that should be happening about November. And then we'll hear. Yeah.
So, Dr. Gad.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the formative assessment and...
Yeah.
The subject of the question, Mark?
Yes, yes.
No, it's okay. So I had just a question on the faculty meeting time. So are you going to be dividing that, like, per group? Like, is it like the science teachers are going to be together and teach each other what they do and explaining to each other what they do, and then the math? And are you going to break it out that way? Just, I just wanted to know.
We do a lot of work with that through the month. So during department meeting time, departments share their practices through PLC time, they share. So when we have faculty meeting time, we're going to take a look at best practices that work across disciplines, and they're going to be sharing sort of what, here is what we do in science, for example, and I want to share this with the entire group, and here's why it's worked. And then how can we replicate that throughout the building? So it's time, it's that one time in the month when we get a chance to sit as a whole group and learn from one another. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. How do you take this? I'm not visible up there. There we go. Thank you.
Do I have to set this up for you? You can do it. I appreciate it. If you can do that.
I don't need a PowerPoint yet. I have just one quick second, then I go.
It's good to see that we are already, we were already working on some of the things that they pointed out, and so it's good to see that we've been on the right path and we will continue to be on the right path. So thank you. All right. We had to approve some minutes. Ms. Harrigan, do you have a motion for us? Bet I do. Yes, I would, I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approve the minutes of the Board of Education meetings held September sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, September nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, and October third, two thousand nineteen. Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Sobel, any corrections, questions? No? Okay. So all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Perugini, do you have any correspondence?
Ma'am Chair, I do. We obviously the email from Mr. Wakis, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. I'm not sure if you're here this evening. Mr. Wakis sends an email on October fifteenth, which I believe we've all read. Unfortunately, due to the content, since it is sensitive personal information, I can't read it through public record, but I do want Mr. Wakis to know that he's seen some correspondence on that. The board has read it. I know it's in the hands of Mr. Solan. So please let us know how things go forward with that. But other than that, that's the only correspondence I received so far.
Thank you. Mr. Solan, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, and it's, you know, I guess like calisthenics today, so I want to ask you to get back up, and because I was asked to present this data that I provided at the last meeting, so I'll do that today. Thank you, Mr. Salamini, for setting that up. As we kind of come into view here, I'll just reiterate, at the last business meeting about a month ago, I provided, you know, data and an overview of the, some of the school climate data, things around discipline and our Safe School Climate surveys. So I have a brief presentation for you this evening, as I was asked to kind of just provide a quote presentation on that information. So, you know, we start with the importance of connecting Maslow's hierarchy of needs. This really serves as the foundation for our SEL, our social-emotional learning goals. We recognize how critically important it is for kids to first feel, you know, that physiological needs are met, you know, food, safety, sleep, shelter, safety being the next piece, that both emotional and physical, and then belonging. You have to feel like you're connected so that you can build esteem, and then ultimately the student is available to learn through self-actualization. And this is really fundamental. You probably, you know, saw this in maybe a college psychology course or something, but it does serve as the basis, really, for a lot of our work around social-emotional learning. So we consider this obviously very important, which is why we made SEL one of our two marquee goals that we focused on over the last three years. So the school climate survey, we're required by the State Department of Education to give the survey every other year. The state provides required questions, and I'm being frank with you, most of them desperately require updating. They're incredibly, I mean, they're just poorly worded in a lot of cases, that they weren't well thought out. They were designed many years ago, and the legislature has, you know, is seeing to it that a committee is formed and those questions are ultimately replaced, because, like I said frankly, they're not very good. So students, you know, through K to twelve are surveyed about their school experience. Those are on our website, those survey results, as well as the parent results and teacher Building-based Safe School Climate Committees then use that information to build relevant plans for their individual schools. Those plans are also on our website. The Safe School Climate Survey results were, I put together this information, and this information is also on our website. This is a summary of the key questions that get to the students' feelings about their experience in school, and this is grades four through six, and there's a lot of information on here. It's kind of hard to read. It probably looks like it's in a two font if you're at the back of the room, but what we wanted to try and do is illustrate from two thousand fifteen to two thousand nineteen, last spring when these were, surveys were administered, kind of the history of where things were. And that's where our Safe School, our District Safe School Committee, when they meet next week, will look at some of this data, as well as the district individual building plans to evaluate, you know, what recommendations they may have. Oops, sorry about that. Sure?
Are those percentages or are they actual?
Those are percentages, sorry. Yeah. Those, these represent percentages, the far left being all are most of the time, some of the time in the middle, and then none of the time at the right-hand side, if that's the response option. The next column over is yes or no, response options, and then never, once, three to five times, I think that is, and six or more, and then disagree, strongly disagree, and agree, strongly agree. And this is for grades seven and eight. You'll see that really, things are unchanged, and that, you know, can be perceived as both good and bad. We always want to try and improve, whether it be our achievement data or our, just the way our kids are feeling about their experience. Mary talked about being open to student feedback, and I don't think that, and she didn't say being open to student feedback. What she said was that, you know, it is important to have student feedback, and we try and solicit student feedback. This survey is one such way that we do that through the process. Advisory is another very common process, seven through twelve, to solicit student feedback and help us do things like, at the high school, have a student-led vaping forum, or student-designed, I should say, and student-led. So these are the high school results. Again, you know, roughly unchanged. It's the same data that was provided last month, so I'm not going to go through line by line, but also just, you know, to reiterate that this and more is available on our district website in great detail. this and more is available on our district website in great detail. So, this piece here is just something that I created. On the state Department of Ed website, Ed site it's called, and that link is also on our website, you can look up discipline data by district. And when you see an asterisk up there, the state requires us to, and the state also puts an asterisk in place where there's, you know, less than five, or five or less incidents in the event that, you know, it could be personally identifiable. So, if there's an asterisk up there, that's what that reflects. So, these are all the Durg B schools, and what I did was take a look at how many in-school suspension incidents are there per student in the district? God bless you. Like, what percentage does that meet out? So, you'll see at the very highest end, it's 6% in one Durg B school system, 6% of the students have had ISS, the lowest being 1% in another district, but really, most districts fall 2%, 3%. And Cheshire is really no difference in that respect, no different. Out-of-school suspensions per student, you know, again, very similar. The low is 0% in one, that's one schools, excuse me, two schools cases, or three districts, excuse me, it's 0%. Fairfield, Granby, and Farmington, no, excuse me, Granby, Fairfield, and Madison, thank you. It's 0%, the high, I think, is 2%, correct? Three at South Windsor. We fall at 1%, like, really like most districts in Durg B. So, we're in the middle of both groups there, in terms of our discipline. You know, so, it's just information, and I think what's relevant about the information is you just look at trends. So, is it trending, you know, higher or lower? The trend here has been pretty static. Except OSS rates have gone down over the last several years. The state changed law about how you could or couldn't suspend a student out of school, and so you have seen a decline in that statewide. Again, all this data is on our website. The 2016-17 is called the EDS 166. The state has many, many reports that are required of school systems, EDS 166 being one of them. It is a summary of discipline data reported for the school district during the 16 to 17 school year. So, now that that year has closed, they put the report up, and you can see that the total number of discipline records reported for the 15-16 year was 345, for the 16-17 school year was 348. It breaks it down by month, but it also has the bullying counts. For 15-16, it was 17 incidents, 16-17, 14 incidents. You know, over the course of 180 days with 4,000-plus students, that's not really, that's statistically significant, but it is 17 to 14. Again, we just look at trends here. Also includes weapons and substance counts. Then you have 17-18 data, which was the most recent that was available, and that includes incidents by month. The incidents total school records reported, 348 to 207. The bullying counts were 14 in 16-17 to 13 in the following year, so fairly static. Now we have the 18-19. And you can see that the discipline report, records reported was actually, you could probably never do this again, is identical to the prior year at 207. The incidents by month, you can, we look at that, too. Typically, early spring in longer months, so if you have a week's vacation, obviously you're going to see a lower number of incidents reported that month, but it's usually early spring and some of the longer months that tend to have more disciplinary issues. Bullying counts last year went from 13 to 25. Obviously, there was an incredible amount of focus on that, and we worked very diligently to provide, as much as we could, information around that to the community, and there were more incidents filed, and so we addressed more of those situations and had 25 verified acts of bullying. So, at the end of the day, we come back to this. No matter what, you know, where we're at with the data or our efforts, we're still going to come back to making sure that kids feel connected, that kids are physiologically and psychologically safe, that kids feel like they belong, and that they feel good about being at school. The vast majority of our data says that they feel that way now, with respect to their surveys, but, like I said, whether it be achievement-oriented, or behavior, or social-emotional, we are always striving to improve that data. We are always striving to improve the experience of our students, so, and our families, and the community, but, you know, students first. That's what we're, we're working to try and do. So, that hasn't changed. This year, like I said, the, the building-based Safe School Climate, or the Climate Committee reports have been completed and are available now on our website, and next week, we'll be meeting with the district committee to try and review those, provide feedback, see if there are areas to strengthen those toward this end. Always, you know, this is the destination, and I've shown to you many, many times, the intersection of social-emotional learning and complex thinking, to the point that Carol is nauseated by it. But that's, that's our destination, and this is just basically a breakdown of that SEL piece. This is what we're trying to do. Some other, I don't know, maybe I can stop there for any of the information I've shared so far. There's a couple of quick things that I want to just touch upon as part of the rest of the report. Nita?
So, when you say, "acts of bullying," does that mean that an investigation has been done and it's been determined to be bullying, so it's not just people that have made reports of potential?
That's correct. Yep.
I have a question about the substance counts.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, will the vaping incidents fall there?
Oh, gee, you know, that's, I'll have to get you that information. I know drug and alcohol counts do, does that fall into the state substance count?
I would want to.
Yeah, I would want to double-check the state, how they collect that. If they don't, I hope that they soon do, because, yeah, we're always trying. It's a, it's a national problem, obviously, right now, vaping, and.
But how many years have we been talking about the vaping problem?
It's relatively new. When I became principal at Cheshire High School, that was 2012, I think, and it was kind of like the honeymoon, you know, smoking had stopped, for the most part, it was very rare to have smoking, and then there were like, two years of before I was there, it was just kind of none of that stuff. And then, the third year I was there, vaping started to become a more significant problem, and now it's reached, you know, academic, excuse me, epidemic levels, thank you. Epidemic, take three. Epidemic levels across America, and so, you know, as Isabel talked about, yeah, it's frustrating to a lot of our students, it's frustrating to our adults, too, and so we've done things like closed bathrooms, higher hall monitors, provide a lot of information and education, increase discipline. But the reason it's an epidemic, and the reason it's so hard, is because it's incredibly difficult to detect. You know, when you can wear literally a vaping device, as Mora Esposito showed me at the Fall Festival, is a watch, take it off vape and put it back, and it looks just like a contemporary digital watch. You would never think. When it's that difficult to detect, and it's odorless, and it, you know, really hard to detect that. So, I think, from my conversations with Mora and Michelle Piccarillo in Social Services, and from Mary and others, that our high school students are really starting to comprehend the risk that is inherent in vaping. And we've started to see a little bit of a cultural shift where it's not as cool. It doesn't mean it's not a problem for us anymore, absolute huge problem for us and pretty much every high school across America, but, you know, I'll get back to you on the substance count piece. Sure. I know, Tony?
Substance count, I'm just curious to know, I guess, kind of the answer, but I know there's been, sometimes some of the vaping incidents gets referred to juvenile review board?
Yes. Yeah, we ticket people, and they get reviewed, they get sent to juvenile review board.
I'm just curious if those vaping tickets are a miscount?
I think that's what Ann's kind of asking, and I'll get you that information. I'm not, I can't definitively tell you that, and I don't want to say yes or no without absolutely knowing, so I'll share that ASAP.
Can you review the process that goes through at each of the schools when they receive this data each year? How do they analyze it? What do they do with it?
They sit with their Safe School Climate Committee, and they review the data that's provided for their school. So, this is district-wide data, they have building-based data. They review that data, they assess, you know, what programs are we using to support, you know, emotional needs or behavioral education? What is that working or not, and to what degree? And what alternatives exist to support our students better? How do we, how do we improve upon this? Even if it's, you know, relatively good, you know, even if it's our best year, how do we continue to build on this effort? Do we reinforce the things that we're already doing? Do we look at alternatives? And then they design a plan, and that plan is outlined on our website for each building. Other questions on this stuff, or just, again, I'll keep it brief, I know we've had already another presentation. Just real quick additional updates for you. The School Security District Manager position, I really commend Vin, I know Mary sat in on that process, and there was a group of folks, our fire chief, Jack Casner, sat in on it as well. We conducted preliminary interviews this week for that position. We're down to a handful of finalists that we look forward to inviting back and moving that process on. So, Nita, I know, you know, I can see you smiling and shaking your head, you know, I know you've been an ardent supporter of that, appreciate it, and we're getting close. Alice training, just remind people, we've talked about this several times, but the teachers across the district on our Professional Development Day for Election Day will be engaging in Alice training, I can't repeat it enough. Unfortunately, it's a, it's really a life skill today, it's options-based training for threat. So, if, you know, we're in this room, we have options of what to do. We've trained for a long time, huddle in a corner, that only makes you more vulnerable. So, this is really a read-and-react-to-the-situation, options-based training. We will only be training the teachers, teachers only, on November 5th, and then we'll, after we go through that process, we'll work on training additional staff. There will be some additional staff on November 5th, but our focus is really on the teachers, and then we'll train additional staff before we ultimately think about how do we roll this out in a developmentally appropriate way to our children. This is not new to education. Other communities have also engaged in it, I know Wallingford and Southington, to name a couple, but, of close neighbors, but it's, it's fairly commonplace now. And we look forward to teaching those skills. And I'll tell you, you know, one of the things that our folks who went through the training, I know Catherine and, I think that there was another, who was with you? Another board member? No, just you? Over the summer, numerous teachers volunteered, secretaries, custodial personnel engaged in Alice training over the summer, and they came away feeling empowered. That this, you know, I can't imagine the fear and everything that goes through your mind during a horrific incident or a threat, this at least gives you a plan, and it gave people a little bit more confidence. So, another piece, the social media presence. We have, I really commend Kelly Lenz, and I know Carol's worked a lot on this as well, but Kelly's been tireless about, you know, you saw her jumping up to take pictures tonight, Instagram, Facebook. Now, we've sent a mailer home to every parent about our Facebook page, Twitter, obviously, as well, so we are encouraging more communication. We're going to talk a little bit tonight about the school modernization plan. I think it's critically important that our community has a vehicle to access that information in, in real time, and we hope that, you know, Facebook can help provide that forum beyond just our parent population. Last, student performance, we have updated information for you. Our goal is, you know, we're creating growth. So, this data is called percent, average percent of growth target achieved. And basically, what that means is every student who takes an assessment in grades three through seven is given a target for the following year. Let's just say it's 100 points arbitrarily, right? So, our ELA students, they're given that target of 100 points. The average, if every student was given 100 points as the growth target, our average student had 70.5% of that growth target they achieved. As you can see, nobody, you know, nobody's averaging 100%. These are the, some of the top-performing districts in Connecticut. We are number two in K through 12 districts in ELA percent of growth target achieved. Now, I think what's important about this is that, and I say number two in K through 12 districts, because Orange and Bethany are only grades three through six being assessed. Farmington is K-12, and they did slightly better than us, and there we are in, in second place of those districts. So, basically, the reason I think that this is so important is because it doesn't matter if you're the lowest achieving kid in the class or the highest achieving student in the class. Everybody is given a target. We want all students to grow. We don't just want students that are in need of more supports to grow, we want all students to grow. Our achievement, as I've shared with you before, we're number five in Connecticut. So, obviously, we have a lot of students that are achieving, but we're number five in Connecticut because all of our students are growing in ELI, right? So, to be number two in Durg B is not, you know, that's a testament to all of our teaching staff, to our kids who've worked really hard, our parents who support them, and our administrative team, and curriculum folks who helped make that happen. So, great work there, guys. But wait, there's more. So, we're the number-one Durg B school system in Connecticut in math, or, excuse me, in Durg B, get ahead of myself. But for Durg B, we're the number-one percent of growth target achieved, K through 12 school system. Again, Woodbridge and Bethany are three through six. Amity Regional High School is, or, excuse me, Amity Regional is regional school district five, that's grades seven and eight only. So, you can kind of get a sense of how we've done relative to other grades, three through eight districts or all schools, really, on this list. So, again, you know, kudos to. So again, you know, kudos to all of our teachers and our students first and foremost, but certainly our administrators and curriculum folks and parents who play significant roles in our student success. So are there any questions on this piece? Sure, Nita.
I don't have much on this piece, but before we were talking about the Safe School Climate Committees.
Yep.
So I was wondering for this individual school committees and the safety, the security committees for each school?
Right.
What about the information on those committees is available on each school's website now and the meeting schedules?
Yeah, we're, we're building that in. We're kind of in the process of transitioning to a new website. So we're at the, also in the process of tearing down the old one. So we're trying not to add a ton of new stuff, but we can add that. We can add, we can try and find a link for that to kick in there. Carol, if you can help us with that. Thanks. Yeah, to do. Any other questions? All right, that's it for me. Thank you guys very much.
Okay, now we can go back?
Yes, now you can go back. I promise you don't have to get back up again and come back down here.
Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Solan. And congratulations to our teachers and students and everyone that worked so hard on our performance. That's fantastic. I think we are now moving to our committee reports. Ms. Sobel, do you have a finance committee report?
I do, thank you. Ah, there we are. This will probably be very brief. We do have a summary through September 30th, 2019, and we are again projecting to end the fiscal year in balance. The summary report include, does include the initial entry of our full year encumbrances for our largest expenditure categories, which includes our salary and student transportation accounts. And again, pleased to report that at this time, there are no significant budget concerns at this early point in the fiscal year.
That's terrific. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Grippo?
Just a, I guess a quick observation. I noticed that if, if I looked at it correctly, tuition outplacement, we're at about 50% of our expenditure. And I was just wondering if that's par for the course because I know that was one of a, that was a problem spot last year. And I was also wondering if it's possible in, in the future, if you could actually add a, a new column for like a percentage spent? Because like I, I was, you know, I would just go through and see the, you know, the zeros or looking for a deficit or whatever, but I had to stop and sort of like go, well, what is the percentage spent so far for the year? Is that something we can add to the report or? So two questions there, sorry.
That's okay. Good evening, everyone. As far as adding a percentage spent, it's a column, so that's easy enough to do. I'll do it in the, in the larger report. And you're looking just for total expenditure against budget, including encumbrances, just a, just a straight column. Okay, well, we'll add it for next month's report and we could take it from there, easy enough. That's a great question about tuition outplaced. I asked the same question, you know, because we are at 50%, you know, we have made encumbrances for the known outplaced tuitions. I wouldn't say that that's our final trend for the year. It is still kind of early, you know? We do have more students that we're keeping in district. We'll continue to monitor if this becomes a variance that's positive that carries through the air would be great news, but I would just be very cautious to say that's our trend for the full year. It's too early.
That would be a very bad trend in the second month, to have it be 50%.
No, no, but it, we have encumbered what we know about, so it is looking pretty good right now, I would say.
Yeah, I mean, it's like, there are certain static accounts that we can predict, like staff, and we encumber that money because I know that we're going to have to pay all of our staff through the entire school year. So we encumber that money and then operate with the other funds to make sure that we're taking care of supplies or things that are, are more volatile, like, like outplacement is a huge volatile area for us. IAs can be pretty volatile depending on kids that come and go and the needs. So, yeah, that one, you're going to see a significant amount encumbered already for the year because like Vin said, the students that we know what their outplacement cost will be, we encumber that money for the year and now it's kind of flexible now. That answer your question, Adam?
Yes, and since that, the costs are encumbered and we're at 50%, that's, like you said, a positive development, so.
Mr. Masiano, would you like to continue with the medical benefits update?
I would, and, and this is a, a brief update. It's, the report that we included for the board this month is, is the final report as of August 31st. I don't have the September 30th claims. However, the good news is that when I prepared the initial report through August, I was estimating claims in August to be about 900,000. They came in at 707,000. So that's 200,000 to the good and so our trust fund balance stands at 3.79 million or 5.23 months' worth, worth of claims. Just like outplaced tuition, I, I hope this certainly, this trend continues to hold. And while I have your attention on medical, I did want to let the, the board members know that, and I'm sure the board remembers, when we moved from Anthem to Cigna, one of the key drivers of that decision was that Cigna has a very aggressive wellness program and they provided wellness dollars, you know, for the school district as well as the town who moved from Anthem to Cigna. So we have been working with Cigna. You know, the transition of, of our employees is complete, so we're, we've been focusing our attention on how do we actually implement, you know, health and wellness and use those dollars. So we have scheduled our first health and wellness fair for our Cheshire Public School employees. We are using the wellness dollars from Cigna to fund this. The event is being held from 2:30 to 5:30 at the high school in the Commons. It's available to employees who are participating in Cigna. We are providing biometric screening, so Quest will be there doing some, taking just some finger sticks from employees to do some, you know, basic screenings for cholesterol, blood sugar and the like. They'll also be doing health assessments, weight, blood pressure. There will be, you know, rewards for employees that participate in this activity. And the early results are that we have, you know, we had to book additional time from Quest because we have had a lot of employees actually accept our calendar invite to the event. Cigna's technology is really good, so the employees, they just log in and they can book their appointment time for the, the actual biometric screening with Quest. So pretty excited about the employee participation rate at this point in time. So with that, are there any questions about the medical benefits report? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sobel. Mr. Masiano, do you have a report for us on the maintenance contract?
I do, and we've provided to the board members a, you know, recommendation on the contract between the Cheshire Board of Ed and officially it's UPS EU, Local 424, Unit 19, the custodial and maintenance employees. Just, I'll just briefly summarize that there's 24 school employees that are a member of this bargaining group. Their contract expired June 30th of 2019. We began negotiating with them in May of 2019 and reached an agreement with them on July 11th, 2019. So we had four negotiating sessions. They were very productive. We came to agreement and then the union members voted and they ratified the tentative agreement on September 23rd. So what I'm presenting to the board tonight is what was a reached tentative agreement. The term of the contract is four years, so that would be July 1st of the current year through June 30th of 2023. The, what I've highlighted here, you know, for the board are those items that have a financial impact to, you know, to the board based on the contract. So with respect to medical benefits, you could see that the HSA plan still remains as the primary plan. We will continue to offer the PPO and the HMO plans, but if employees want those plans, they have to pay the full cost difference, which is consistent with what we've done in the past. The deductibles remain at 2,000, 4,000, you know, our medical benefits trend, you know, has been good. The move from Anthem to Cigna does reduce our fees related to claims administration and, you know, we're certainly hoping with the wellness initiatives that, that will tend to keep claims relatively low. So the deductibles remain the same. The amount that the board contributes towards the HSA plan, that doesn't change. The amount that employees pay to buy their plan through their coshare payment that comes from payroll deduction, that goes from 9% this year, it goes up 1% per year, so it goes to 10% in 2021, then 11%, then 12%. The wage side, which again is outlined here, we agreed to wage increases of two and a half percent for the current fiscal year and that would be retroactive to July 1st, 2.625 in 2021, 275 in 2122, and then again, 2.75 in 2022, 2023. Also, as we negotiated, they, the union asked for some other increases that affect just a limited number of employee. Our inside maintenance men who are our, essentially our mechanics, either licensed as electricians, plumbers, low voltage electricity services, they take call for seven consecutive days and they're on 24/7, but obviously when they're at work, you know, calls are covered, but you know, they do take quite a few calls at night. We were paying them $200 for that seven-day period and we agreed to increase that to $300 for the seven-day period. That's not per day, that's for the entire period. So we, we thought that was, that was very reasonable. They do get a shoe allowance and they asked for that to be increased and we negotiated and agreed to move it from 150 to $175 annually. And then the high school lead man, who does have significant responsibilities, the lead man receives a pay differential, it was 7%, we've increased that to 10%. You know, the overall cost of this contract that was negotiated is about $40,000 for wages and about $5,000 additional based on these other items that we agreed to. It's very reasonable, you know, on both sides. I, I think we negotiated very effectively. The meetings were productive, they were cordial. We each had items that we asked for that we didn't get, so there was a pretty fair exchange of, of what each side didn't get. And the last thing I'll, I'll let the board know is that we had about 45 items that were negotiating points as we started. Some of those are simple typos or corrections that need to be made for technical reasons. Some of those are duplicated. You know, one of the things that did happen since this last contract is the Supreme Court, you know, through the Janus ruling, no longer allows unions to charge an agency fee for employees who don't want to join the union, you know? So that is language that both sides proposed, that we eliminate the referenced agency fees, so those items were agreed upon. So the, you know, the recommendation to the board is to approve the contract, you know, as agreed a tentative agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Masiano. Mr. Perugini?
Man, Chair, I have a motion that the Cheshire Board of Education approves a collective bargaining agreement with UPS EU, Local 24, Unit 19, for the custodial and maintenance employees for the period from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2023. Further, that the Board of Education authorizes Superintendent Schools to sign the contract on its behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Perugini. Seconded by Ms. Harrigan. Is there any discussion? Mr. Grippo?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. Just, so just to clarify, this motion would cover a contract for 24 employees, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and the wage increases, is that a salary increase and steps? Or is that, how is that structured exactly?
So this particular bargaining unit does have, does not have any steps. It's a, it's a straight general wage increase. The only, you know, new employees in this union have a, an initial starting rate and then after six months, they go to what's called a job rate. So there's no real steps in this contract at all.
And I noticed there's no mention of any kind of pension benefits or anything. Are these employees under a defined contribution plan or do they have anything at all or?
Yes, they do. So employees that, that were hired prior to July 1 of 2012 participate in the town's pension plan. Employees that were hired after July 1, on or after July 1 of 2012, they have a defined contribution plan in which the, the board contributes 5% of their salary towards that defined contribution plan. If the employee puts in at least 1% funded from their own wages, the board matches that 1%. So the board's maximum contribution is 6%. And that did not change, you know, in this contract. What was previous remains the same.
Thank you.
Mr. Perugini?
Quick question, Vincent. I know, I remember this now, there was a potential excise tax issue a few years ago in negotiating the last contract and I know we're fairly safe through 2020. Would that come back again to us after 2020?
The excise tax was pushed out to 2022.
Oh.
So we're, we're still well below the, the family threshold is 27,500. So we're, we're good almost to the last year of the contract, assuming that that doesn't get pushed out further.
So what this is, is a 40% excise tax levied on the school district because of the ACA, but we'll keep an eye and see how that evolves the last, next couple of years.
Always, always thinking about it and, and less concerned about it than I was frankly, you know, back in 2015 or so. But it, it does loom out there and there was talk of repealing it altogether in the last legislative session, but that didn't pass.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I do have one question. And I know, I probably should know the answer to this, but the budget for maintenance, you know, line item, well, for the salaries, does that, did we build in some anticipated increase?
Yes.
In that, okay.
This is right on budget.
Thank you.
2.5%.
Okay. All right. If there are no other questions, does anyone from the public wish to comment on this Seeing none, I will put this to a vote. All those in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you. And you have another one to present to us?
I, I do have another one, but before we leave this one, I do want to thank the, the negotiating team from the custodians who, you know, really worked hard to put together what I think is a, is a very fair contract on both sides. So that's Liz Ditman from the UPS EU, she's their union representative, Patrick Cruz, Scott Leibengood and Vincita, who who are, are the employees that negotiated this contract on behalf of all those employees. And, you know, I, I know the board recognizes that, you know, running an education system, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of, you know, employees that, you know, are very dedicated to the mission of making sure our students have everything that they need to be successful in school. You know, obviously, the teachers and the administrators are, are certainly important, but, you know, so is our maintenance staff, and they, they really do a great job. So I did want to acknowledge and thank them for their hard work.
If I can, yeah, if I can channel that, I, I echo that. Thank you for all your work on this. I, I know the negotiations are always time consuming, but, you know, worthwhile. And I do want to say, my experience on the board, I, I will say that this is one of the groups that's always been fair, I won't say easy to work with, but definitely it comes at us in a collaborative manner where we can come to an agreement to, you know, a viable solution that, you know, doesn't break the bank, because, you know, we're, we're dealing with some limited funds, but also is very fair to them. So I do recognize those members and their support. So I thank you for helping us get there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Perugini. Mr. Masiana, do you have some, another contract to?
Yes, I do. I have the Cheshire Educational Secretaries and Technicians United. So I'll, I'll give you background as I did on the custodians as well. This is a, again, a contract formally between the Cheshire Board of Education and the Cheshire Educational Secretaries and Technicians United. They are represented by an attorney. They are not affiliated with any union such as UPS EU or CSCA. They're their own union. They are clearly a union. There are 50 employees in the school district that are represented by this bargaining group, and it includes about 10 and 12-month secretaries, media technicians who work in our libraries, technology assistants who provide technology support, you know, to our software, our hardware, and our network across the district. Also, our benefit specialists and our payroll specialists are members of this bargaining unit. We began negotiating with them on May 21st for renewal to their contract, which also expired this past June 30th of 2019. We held five negotiating sessions with them. Again, similar to the custodians, the, the sessions were very, very productive. They were conducted very cordially, very professionally. The tentative agreement was reached on October 7th, so that was just last Monday. They happened to have a union meeting already scheduled, because there is a notice period before they vote on a new contract. So last night, they voted in favor of the ratified, excuse me, in, in favor of the tentative agreements we reached October 7th. So the highlights on the financial impact side, as I, as I explained with the custodians, are very, very similar to what the custodians' contract looks like. Again, it's a four-year term, it's from July 1 of 19 through June 30th of 2023. The, the medical benefit plans for the full-time staff is exactly the same as the custodian. It's an HSA core plan. Employees can buy up to the PPO and HMO. The deductibles are the same at 2,000, 4,000. The board's contribution remains the same. The coshare rates that the employees will pay, same as the custodians, 9, 10, 11, and 12% in the last year of the contract, 2022, 23. I, I do want to add a couple of things that were negotiated in this contract that are new. The, the secretaries, although there were provisions for all employees greater than 20 hours who were secretaries would be covered by this bargaining unit, you know, historically, we didn't have part-time employees in this union until last year. And we did not have language that addressed specifically what the prorated benefits would be. So we weren't able to negotiate that into this contract, and that's on the lower portion of page one. Just very briefly, employees that are part-time, who work less than 30 hours, they can only participate in the medical benefits plan called the Cigna Open Access Elements Plan. That is the basic bronze level coverage, and their benefits are prorated at a 50% rate compared to full-time employees. Okay, so that's employees of 30 hours or less. Employees that work between more than 30 but less than 35 hours, and 35 hours makes them full-time, those employees can participate in all our medical benefit plans, but their benefits are prorated at 75% of a full-time employee. So it was very important that we were able to negotiate, you know, the terms of which we would have employees that are part-time hired and receive benefits in this, in this particular bargaining unit. So we're very satisfied with those provisions. Moving on to the wage side, wage increases under this agreement are 2.5% for 1920, 2.65 in 202021, 2.75, and then 2.75 again in the last year of the contract. A couple of other changes that affect wages. The contract always called for a payment for employees who retired, who had 10 or more years of service, received a payment of $1,500 a year for five years, so the total 7,500, and that was originally agreed upon to help cover the cost of their medical benefits post-retirement. The five years is a long period of time. You know, we asked that we reduce the number of years payout, because the longer we have those payouts, the longer it stays as a liability as part of our, you know, post, you know, our liability for post-employment benefits. So the agreement we came to is we would pay out over three years instead of five years, and then, but we are increasing the payout from a total of 7,500 to a total of $7,800. Again, this only affects employees who retire, who have 10 or more years of service. The other financial wage piece is longevity payments. We have longevity payments of employees who are 10 to 14 years, receive a $500 longevity payment under the contract that just expired. Under the new contract, we will increase that from $500 annually to $525 annually, and then in the third year of the contract, it would go up to $550 annually. Again, that's employees between 10 and 14 years of service. Employees with 15 or more years of service were receiving $550 annually. We're increasing that to 650, and then 750 in the third year of the contract. So that's the wage piece. And then, you know, the, the last couple of items we put in there for information, we never had a pay grade specific for part-time employees. We've added that. It's a grade one, and it begins at $16 per hour. Again, very reasonable. And we made an adjustment to the union leave provision for officers of the union. I think, again, overall, very fair contract on both sides, and I do recommend that the board approve this contract.
Ms. Sobel?
I move that the Cheshire Board of Education approves the collective bargaining agreement with Cheshire Educational Secretaries and Technicians United for the period from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2030, sorry, 2023. Further, that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to sign the contract on its behalf.
Do I have a second, Ms. Harrigan? Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Grippo, I knew to look right at you.
I'll just ask the same question again about the salary increases. Are there steps involved with these increases?
Yes. So the, this contract has five steps, and the steps mean that when an employee, you know, begins work, they are at step one, and then in the second year, they go to step two automatically. So we didn't change the incremental increase between steps. It's, it's 2.5%. It's the way it's been in this contract. What we did increase is just a general wage increase across all the steps. So it is a 2.5% increase, but there is already a step factor built in of 2.5%. Does that make sense? Okay, so when an employee moves from step one to step two, their wage automatically increases as a result of the step 2.5%. So, plus the 2.5% general wage increase. So those first five years, they're essentially going up about 5% per year. Once they've reached step five, there are no additional steps. So they stay at step five. So employees that are here five years or more, their wage increase is 2.5% under this contract.
What percentage of people in this bargaining group are five and greater, or four and greater?
Two-thirds are, you know, here more than five years, just as a, as a quick estimate.
Higher.
Yeah.
The, the step, the steps have already been maxed out for those people?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, two-thirds of the employees in this bargaining unit are at step five.
Okay. Mr. Gussenberg?
Just a, a quick question. On the longevity piece, it says it's going up to, for instance, 750 annually. Does that mean if somebody were in the district for 30 years, they would get 30 times?
No, 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 no.
Okay.
$750 per year. Once you hit 15 years?
So if I retire from the district after being here for 30 years, I get a 750 longevity payment?
No, while you're employed by the district.
I get an additional 750. Walk me through it. I'm unclear.
You, you receive your annual rate of pay, you know, it, let's say it's, for most of these employees, it averages around, you know, $45,000. So that's your salary that you're paid. Once a year, you receive a longevity payment of, depending on your years of service. If you're here for 10 years, under this new contract, you'll get a payment of $525. And I believe we pay that in, around January each year. So it's a one-time payment while you're employed. As long as you've met 10 years or more of service, you get a longevity payment. And the rate varies depending on the number of years you're with.
Oh, I understand.
Ms. Vadi?
I just want to make sure I understand. But the one-time payment?
One, one-time payment every year.
Every year?
Yes.
So it's like a bonus?
Yes.
For being here. But is this?
Like a retention incentive.
Is this the only bargaining unit that gets that? I didn't hear that for the custodians. So I'm just curious as to why?
Well, the custodians do get longevity payment in this range as well. They, we didn't negotiate or agree on increasing the longevity payment with the custodian contract.
Is this, is this something that we offered all bargaining units in the, in the district?
The custodians have it, the secretaries have it. I believe the instructional assistants have it as well. I don't believe the teachers have it.
The administrators do not, and I believe the teachers, we removed it from their contract last time through.
So is it?
I believe.
Is there a reason? Is it something that's typical in all similar contracts? Is it something that we need to keep in, or what was the thought process, I guess?
Of keeping it in?
Yep.
Well, it was, it was in, you know, and very difficult to take something out without making up for it in another way. And I will tell you frankly, the discussion that we had around longevity was not to take it out. The, you know, one of the requests and, and the negotiating points was stop with the longevity payments and add a sixth and a seventh step. And so we agreed that we would just move the, the longevity payments up, you know, $25, you know, this year for the, you know, 10 to 14-year employees, and then $25 more. So, you know, it, when it's in the contract, taking it out means you're going to have to make up for it in another way. And again, even though we discussed it, it seemed that this was the most prudent way, you know, from the board's perspective, to address the, the request.
So it had been in the teacher's contract, but negotiated out at some point?
I believe so.
Okay.
The last time around, but I confirm that.
No, I think what we, my recollection is what we, what we removed from the teacher contract was the payment for waiver of medical benefits.
Yes.
For new teachers.
Yep.
That joined. So existing teachers, if they decided to waive, they would get that. But new teachers won't receive a, a waiver payment any longer.
And then also for the retirees, the additional money that's paid, the 7,500, now it's going to be 7,800. Is that just for this bargaining unit, or is that typical for other bargaining units as well?
The custodians have a similar payment, and we negotiated a similar change with the custodians. We reduced the number, the total dollar of payments from five years to three years. The custodians, actually, I, I remember now, the custodians are receiving $8,000 over five years. Now they're receiving $8,000 paid over three years. Okay, so, again, the, the goal, you know, for the board was to reduce the number of years payments, to reduce that future liability. And again, it makes sense for us to do that, and we are paying the, the secretaries, you know, for that.
My last question on this topic. So it's, is this typical in most districts that they have this type of, these type of incentives or payments?
The, the medical payments at retirement?
Yeah, medical and then the longevity.
Yeah, I, you know, and I, I'm looking at Richard Gussenberg, because I know he's got a lot of years' experience as well, but it's not unusual to see these types of payments in contracts. You know, some of the things that, you know, I've seen in contracts are, you know, significant payout of unused sick time, you know. We don't have significant payout of unused sick time upon retirement. Some contracts allow for carryover of vacation and sick time, and then payout at retirement. We don't do some of those things. So it varies, Nita, but, you know, I, I think our contracts are reasonable relative to other contracts across the state for these types of bargaining units.
Mr. Grippo?
Sorry, um, oh, man. That's my train of thought. Hold on. Okay. So, building on Mr. Solent's point about two-thirds of the employees being at step five, so that would mean that those two-thirds employees would be just seeing a salary increase over the next five years? Would that be how that would be interpreted? And not just the, there'd be no, basically a 5% increase in salary, it'd just be the?
Just the 2.5% or the 2.65, 2.75, 2.75?
And, and, you know, I haven't been on the board all that long, and I haven't participated in a lot of contract negotiations, but does a salary increase like this by the board accepting salary increases like this with a contract that has steps built into it, does that set precedence for any future negotiations?
In my opinion, the steps are already there. You're not, you're not adding any additional steps. And again, steps are not unusual in, in these bargaining unit contracts. The teachers have 14 steps. That varies across school districts. We've seen some districts with as many as 20. Most are, you know, in the 12 to 16 range in terms of steps. And the idea of step is, you know, a new employee has to gain experience, you know, their salary increases more rapidly during the step years. That's, you know, the acknowledgement of, you know, their improvement and their experience as they work through the job. That's the rationale behind the steps. It's, you know, been that way, you know, for many years. So, you know, we, we tend not to add steps, but the ones that are there, we tend to keep.
Any, Mr. Perugini?
Couple of things, really quick. So if what it's worth, and I, I do hope you'll be in future contract negotiations at the tables. It's quite the process.
Yeah.
In some cases. But, uh, you know, it's not for a lack of trying. Vincent didn't mention it. It takes both parties to agree to a point in the list to do something with it. And more often than not, the step increases just, you know, don't seem to go away. Not saying they should, but, um, that's what happens in future years. But I was going to quip earlier, since we're all kind of confused a little bit about that longevity pay, I wanted to quip in and say, you know, perhaps if you use a common core box method, might explain it a little easier. I wanted to quip in and say, you know, perhaps if you use a common core box method, might explain it a little easier. I'm joking. But thank you, Vincent. I appreciate your help on this.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, I will take a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous in favor. Thank you.
Ms. Howland?
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you want to recognize that, yeah, okay.
I, I do, I do want to.
I apologize.
That's okay. I do want to recognize the negotiating team for this contract as well. It's Eric Brown, who was union counsel, and then our employees Sharon, Joakim, Jan Guerra, Lori Braun. It was a, you know, it was quite good negotiating session. It was a little bit easier than the one that we did four years ago, I would say, and I'm really grateful for that. We, we were able to come to, you know, terms, you know, very reasonably and relatively quickly. And again, you know, the, the employees that provide the services to our school in, in, under this bargaining unit agreement, you know, starting with our ten-month and twelve-month secretaries, but our benefit specialists, our payroll specialists, they are very organized, efficient. They help keep the school running in ways that I'm not even sure I know all the things that they do. And they do a great job for us. So I do want to thank them all for their efforts. And I'm glad we, you know, have a new agreement that we could go forward with.
I agree. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Ms. Vadi, you have a policy committee report.
Yes, thank you. So I'll first go through the policies that we reviewed for first reading. The first one was five-one-four-four-point-four, students' discipline. Basically, this is pursuant to state law, which says that we cannot withhold physical exercise as part of discipline, that students need a minimum of twenty minutes per day and we are not allowed to withhold it as a form of discipline. So we added the following language to this policy. The board requires that each student in elementary school shall have not less than twenty minutes daily in total devoted to physical exercise, except that a planning and placement team may alter such schedule for a child requiring special education and related services. Further, the board permits in its elementary schools, including an additional amount of time beyond the required twenty minutes for physical exercise devoted to undirected play during the regular school day, subject to the approval of the building administration. The next one for first reading was personnel certified certification. This policy was being updated to conform to also current state statute. And this basically states that, I guess, staff, teachers must submit proof of appropriate certification to the school system prior to the commencement of employment with the Cheshire Public Schools. And in the event of a lapse in certification, the employee's status shall be immediately changed to substitute, substitute per diem with no benefits. And there's certain other things that happens. And this, this already happens in our system. It's just being codified right now and all of the staff are already aware of this. So this is not something new that's happening. It's just being codified. That's the only thing that's being new. Next is personnel, four-one-three-one, personnel certified staff development. This policy language will now state that the professional development program shall include, quote, "training and culturally responsive pedagogy and practice," end quote. Six-one-four-two, basic instruction. We discussed this, but I'm not, we're not moving that forward for first reading. We want to discuss that further. Six-one-five-nine, individualized education program. Districts are now required by law to have a board policy regarding IEPs. So this is a pretty lengthy policy and we have now codified it. We reviewed for second reading. One-three-three-one, community relations, smoke-free environment. We did not change the language of this policy since the first reading. This policy is being updated per state statute. And it really is just being revised to include, quote, "all school property, both inside and outside," and also adds definition for electric cigarette liquid. The next policy we reviewed for second reading, also no changes were made. Four-one-one-two-point-five-one, four-two-one-two-point-five-one, personnel certified slash non-certified employment reference checks. Due to numerous changes to law covering criminal history checks for school personnel, the recommendation was made to replace the current policy with the updated K policy, so which we did. Next, four-one-one-eight-point-five-one, four-two-one-eight-point-five-one, personnel certified, non-certified social networking. This policy also was for a second reading. We did not change the language since the first reading. And this policy is intended to provide guidance for staff regarding their presence on social media. Five-one-one-four, suspension and expulsion slash due process. Again, this was for a second reading and we did not change anything from the first time around. And the following language was added. This is also pursuant to state law. Quote, "to be expelled, the student's conduct must be found to be both violative of a board policy and either seriously disruptive of the educational process or endangering persons or property," end quote. The prior language had been or, not and. We also discussed a couple of different things that we're not bringing forward. But I just wanted to let you know what we discussed. I had asked to be placed on the agenda, Mr. Grippo's transparency document. And I just couldn't recall where we had left things at the end of the last year. And so we agree that the next steps really are to wait for final legislation to be enacted and then we'll review our current policies to be sure they conform with state statutes. Also, Mr. Solan explained that there had been a question from an in-town organization regarding allowing out-of-town groups to distribute flyers to our students soliciting their programs. We discussed this topic and the committee came to a conclusion that we wanted to continue to distribute flyers from any nonprofit organization whose programs potentially benefit our students. So again, we didn't vote on that. That was just for discussion. Changes in state law. This has already been codified within the Cheshire High School programming and documentation. So everyone's aware of this. But since this is a third reading, I will read this policy. So commencing with the graduating class of 2023, parentheses, beginning with the incoming class of 2019, 2020, end parentheses, and for each graduating class thereafter, in order to graduate and be granted a diploma, students must satisfactory complete a minimum of twenty-five credits, including not fewer than nine credits in the humanities, including civics and the arts, nine credits in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, one credit in physical education and wellness, one credit in health and safety education, one credit in world language, and one credit mastery-based diploma assessment slash senior experience. Three electives. So I hereby move that the Cheshire Board of Education give a third and final reading to policy six-one-four-six, graduation requirements, and direct the superintendent to put said policy into immediate effect.
Thank you, Ms. Vadi. Do I have a second? Mr. Grippo, thank you. Any discussion about this policy? Any questions? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this motion? Seeing none, I will take a vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vadi. Okay. Sorry. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the formation of the calendar committee in accordance with policy six-one-one-one. The school calendar is drawn up by a committee composed of the superintendent of schools or his designee, the chairman of the board of ed, a member of the board of education chosen by the chairman, a teacher who may be chosen by the president of the Education Association of Cheshire, an administrator who may be chosen by the president of the Cheshire Administrative Personnel, and a parent who may be chosen by the president of the townwide council. And I am happy to announce that the board of education member that will, who will serve on the calendar committee is Mr. Grippo, who has graciously offered to serve in that position again this year. So we don't, this is a recommendation, but we don't have to vote on it?
No, no.
Excuse me, pardon me.
We've already covered it.
Okay. Okay. Apparently, the first committee of the, the first meeting of the committee will be set in the next few weeks. And at the meeting, the 2020-2021 proposed calendar will be discussed and formally recommended for adoption. And the 2021-2022 proposed calendar will be drafted. Okay. Is there any member of the public that would like to address the board on any topic whatsoever? Seeing none. Old business. As we all know, the town council has established a joint school modernization committee. And it is made up of three members of the board of education, three members of the town council. And where originally it was to be five members of the community. The town council, at their meeting on Tuesday, voted to increase the number of commit, community members to seven and made the formal appointment of the individuals who are going to be members of the committee. And I would like to propose the following resolution that we would vote on. Resolved that the Cheshire Board of Education fully supports the establishment by the town council of a collaborative study group to be known as the School Modernization Committee, charged with developing a modernization plan for the Cheshire Public Schools facilities and made up of three members of the town council, three members of the board of education, and seven members of the community, and the appointment by the town council of the following individuals to the School Modernization Committee. From the town council, Paul Bowman, Sylvia Nichols, Peter Talbot. From the board of education, Catherine Howland, Anne Harrigan, Anthony Piergianni. From the community, Jen Bates, Matt Bowman, Kathleen Devlin, Richard Gussenberg, Anne Marie Kemp, Kemp, Rene Martinez, and Charles Neth. Do I have a second? Mr. Grippo, thank you. Is there any discussion, any comments? Anybody have anything to? Mr. Piergianni?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate being asked to serve on the committee and happy to go through that process again. It's in the best interest of, of Cheshire. I just want to add, I've been involved with you and Anne and Rob Oars, Paul Bowman, Peter has been part of that. And with our staff here at the school district, you know, Jeff and Vincent, Sean, Kimball. So it's been a pretty positive group working to get this far. And that's what I add, I think we had over thirty responses from the community. And it was nice to see the diversity of people expressing interest, from architects to construction specialists, community members, PTA, parents, empty nesters. So there's definitely a lot of involvement, which is great because I think one of the, one of the complaints, or I guess wishful thinking people had last year was, wish was more community involvement. Well, we got it. I think so much so that it went to seven members, so I'm very happy to see that. So I think it's been a very productive group. I, I saw some emails today of folks trying to figure out, when they had the first meeting, all the information is going to be public. This, this group, the town council, board of ed, folks made it clear that all meetings should be taped, recorded, made available to the public, minutes published as possible. And of course, people can come and watch and hopefully ask questions during the meeting. So it should be something you've all been waiting for. And hopefully, within the year, we'll have some good ideas out of this committee. So looking forward to it. And I want to thank everyone that volunteered.
Thank you, Mr. Piergianni. Anyone else have anything to add? Mr. Grippo?
Well, I think at the last meeting, I also enthusiastically supported the, the, what do you call it? The School Modernization Committee. And I'm happy that the resolution was drafted, that so we can all vote on it. And I believe although that those who are not appointed to the committee cannot directly participate, they can attend and they can speak at some points during the meeting to contribute. I guess other ideas are, is that correct as well?
Right. There will be a public comment, public comment at each of the meetings. And yes, I, I also want to point out that I think we can anticipate that there may be additional ways for people to be involved, either in terms, you know, there may be subcommittees or advisory groups or any number of additional opportunities for members of the community especially and other, you know, certainly all board members are welcome to attend the meetings as well. But, you know, the whole purpose, the whole, you know, kind of driving force is to make this as open and as collaborative a process as possible, meaning across the whole community. So, you know, we did get a lot of really good expressions, expressions of interest from a lot of talented people. And hopefully, we will be able to take advantage of those people, you know, staying involved and, and, but certainly, there will be an opportunity at every one of these meetings for the public to comment. Does that answer your question? Yeah, okay.
If I could stand on that. So this is a bona fide committee. It's not a, lack of better words, a book club. It's like a committee of board of ed would be or a committee of town council. So they got to hear by Robertson's orders, bylaws, no different committees that, you know, the both town council and board of ed. So, so folks are sort of sitting on the audience, listen, can necessarily set the table if not in the committee. But, but what Karen just said is there absolutely will be advisory groups where I'm, I'm certain in the meetings that, you know, if that committee needs to bring in specialists to talk at the meeting, there'll be chances. So it's not closed. It's definitely open, but trying to run like a real committee so we get to the, to the end game, so.
Thank you, Mr. Piergianni. Okay, so did I ask if anybody from the public wanted to comment on this? No. Okay, seeing none, then I will ask for a vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the chair has no new business. Does anyone else have any new business? Mr. Grippo?
It was just more of a question. Going back to the, the correspondence that was sent to us, where there was, inside the, the letter was discussions of certain policies and/or procedures. Is, are, are any of those, Mr. Solan, by, by your estimation, is that's, is there anything in there that the, the policy committee needs to review? Or is, is by your estimation, everything was, is by the letter and there's nothing that really needed any sort of revision or anything in there?
I didn't see anything in the letter that I thought required immediate attention, but I'll review it again and we can discuss it at a policy meeting or, you know, certainly talk to Ms. Vadi about it, his chair of policy, before we have that meeting.
Great, thank you. Before we adjourn, I'm just going to read off the, I never remember to do this, upcoming meetings of the board of ed on October 28th, at 7:00 PM, is a curriculum committee meeting in Homiston Boardroom. November 7th at 7:30, Board of Education Elementary School Showcase at Highland Elementary School. Those are always great. November 4th, oh, going back in time, 6:30 PM, Policy Committee Meeting at the Homiston Boardroom. November 11th, 7:00 PM, the Curriculum Committee will be meeting again at Homiston Boardroom. And November 21st will be the Board of Education Business Meeting at 7:30 PM in Town Hall. Election Day is November 5th, no school, but professional development. And, oh, budget meetings will be starting on January 9th with the presentation of the superintendent's budget at Dodd Middle School, 7:30 PM. Are these, all these budget meetings is, are on the website already? Like the schedule?
Is that just going to up there?
They haven't been on yet. They will, the whole slate of meetings will be put on our website fairly soon. Yes, sorry.
Exciting.
Yeah. Okay, so.
I'm so sorry that I won't be able to share that experience with you all. We'll be following on TV, I'm sure.
Yes, exactly. Okay.
I believe they're open to the public.
May I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Sobel, second. Ms. Vadi, thank you. Ms. Vadi, thank you. We are adjourned.